Good evening. I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls City Council Meeting to Thursday, March the 6th to order. Roll call.
Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Holst?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Madsen?
Here.
McCusker?
Yeah.
Schoblum?
Yeah.
And Mayor Robinson.
Yep. All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Meeting. I think spring is trying to sprung. It'll get here yet. This time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the amended agenda submitted.
I will second.
Motion by Merle and a second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? At this time, we're going to move on to public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes and please limit your comments to three minutes. For those that may be coming to speak about frozen water lines and running water and water bills, just to let you know, we will listen to you, but the city is still right now going through the process of collecting information so that we can make sure that if we can give credits or we do give credits, that we have the right numbers to be able to use to put all that stuff, information together. Because we want to make sure that everybody, if we do this, gets the proper credit that they so deserve. So, but we will listen to anybody that wants to speak on this, under the public input this evening. Is there anyone wishing to speak under public input?
Joel Wilson. Live on 801 North Almond Street regarding frozen water lines. It started the 29th of February. I've had no water since. There was brand-new upgrades. And, you know, there's, there's really no reason for this. If they've upgraded it, I mean, what else can you say? You know? There's three of us back in the cul-de-sac there. And who knows how long we're gonna go without water?
Has, I mean, has already, this would already been reported like that? Do we know about that?
Yes. I've talked to Tom the day it went out.
Mm-hmm.
And I've talked to Greg also on some issues on this regarding, is there a warranty on this? Who gets the warranty? You know, does the homeowner get to use the warranty on any of this? Or is it just the city regarding the water main, if a water main went out or something?
That was something we're gonna have to look into. I mean, without knowing about it, I mean, we can't fix it unless we know about it. This is the first I've heard of it. I mean, to be out without water this long is unsatisfactory.
Yeah.
So, we've got to figure something out and get it done. I mean, the, I'm sorry, I want to apologize. I mean, and I know, I mean, we're at Mother Nature's graces, but at the same token, it's unacceptable. And I agree with you fully, and I'd be just like you are right now.
Yeah.
Not happy.
Joanne's has been out two days, three days after mine, and who knows how long my neighbor Glenn's has been out. He's been down in Florida since the first of the year.
Where's that, where's that Almond Street at?
It's Cannon Court also.
Yeah.
The last. High school?
Back in the northeast.
And is that in the first cul-de-sac back there or the second?
The last, very last one, all the way to the north.
The last one?
Yes.
And, and how many out of water down there?
Three of us.
Three of them?
The last three on that street.
I think there might be one in water, too, maybe. That Fritz's place, rental place, possibly.
Have you, have you tried to hire somebody to kind of thaw it out?
I had tried to hire Plaz, and he couldn't do anything.
Is, is that PVC in, in there?
I'm assuming it is, or it's no good.
But you give me a call. I can thaw it out, if you want to thaw it out.
He could not push the pecks through the copper line. He figures there's too many kinks in it. And there's plenty of snowfall, snow covering where the water line goes, so. I'm assuming it's in the street. And I talked to Greg about this, and he was thinking that since the water main is roughly run right in the center of the cul-de-sac, there's quite a distance between my water shut-off and the main. I paced it off at fifteen paces, roughly three feet a pace, so that's forty-five feet.
Twenty feet.
And there's plenty of snow over my water shut-off and everything.
How far from the meter are you to the street then? How many feet is the street?
Well, he's back on the cul-de-sac, so like Joe and I discussed, you know, if he was mid-block, he'd probably only have about twenty feet of water service exposed, or not exposed, but in the street. He's got twice that.
Yeah.
The three of them are all in the cul-de-sac, and they've got much longer service lines. Ted go up there and did fly, Ted did go up there, and the hydrant does flow, so it's not the main. It's the three service lines that are frozen, but I don't know as far, so your shut-off to the, to the main is about?
And my main, and my water shut-off sits probably five to six feet from the backside of the curb.
Yep, and then maybe another ten or fifteen to your house, not that much farther?
Well, it must curve around to the north side of where it comes in the northeast corner of my house.
Okay.
But it's all, plenty of snow covering. It's, I've never had a problem, since I've lived there since ninety-seven. And Glenn has never had a problem, and Joanne has never had a problem either, up until this year. And I had nothing with the water. Water was flowing fine. It felt a little colder than, than normal, but I come home on Wednesday, the 29th, I think it said, or 19th, nothing.
So, it's been out since the 19th of February?
Yes.
Oh, I thought you said 20.
Yeah, you said the 29th. That's, that's even more unacceptable.
Two weeks, two weeks in a day, according to, and I talked to Tom about it, and he gave me references. Well, then I was gonna have Doug Geisberg's, because Plaz wasn't, I wasn't hearing nothing from him, so I was gonna have Doug Geisberg's do it. Well, can't do it, because it's plastic.
Okay. We'll get, we'll look into this and see what we can do and make sure the city knows it so that he'll be one that's definitely on the list.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else wishing to address the council on their public input this evening? If not, we will move on to the consent agenda. Items on this area, the agenda may be adopted or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For those at home, I will read the consent agenda. Item A is adjust and correct claims for the accounting period ending February the 28th, 2014. Item B are the meeting minutes for February the 18th, 2014 City Council Meeting. Item C, second reading and adoption of ordinance 334 and summary of publication adopting the City Council Falls Fee Schedule. City of Cannon Falls Fee Schedule, sorry. D is the statutory tort limits. Item E, replacement of squad car computers. Item F, 2000, Resolution 2060, supporting Dakota County's effort to seek state bond funds for Billsby Dam. Item G was removed under the amended agenda, which is now item A, under Council Business, the street renames. Item H is Resolution 2062, canvas returns and declare election results from city special election. Item I is Resolution 2061, petition for discuss, dissolution of Cannon Falls Hospital District pursuant to Minnesota Statute 447.38 subsection 1. Item J is authorize Ron Johnson to be placed on the bank signature cards. Item K is Resolution 2063, interim policy regarding payment of utility bills while running water to prevent water service lines freezing. Are there any items anybody wishes to bring down this evening?
I didn't get K.
That was on the amended portion. Did you not get the amended agenda?
I wanted to bring down I.
Okay. All right, will be item 7B. Any others? Not, Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus item I, which is Resolution 2061.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Bill, second by Merle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carries. That moves us on to item 7A, which is the street renames. Nice squad car.
Waiting for it to load, but if you recall, we've got a, a pretty good-sized project going on the south end of our city. It's gonna result in a new interchange for Highway 52. That's resulting in a new County Road 24 being built, which means the county's gonna renumber the existing road that's now 24. That's gonna get a name of County Road 20, I believe. When some of this preliminarily got underway, one of the things that concerned me is we've got several streets that have multiple names for essentially the same street. And so I talked with Dave Maroney, and we ended up having conversations with the township and with the counties, or county, to try to come up with a naming for all of the roads that were gonna be impacted by this construction project. And so I prepared this memo. I'm, I'm sure you've had a chance to look at it and look at the map. Essentially, what we did was we want to tie 4th Street south all the way down to the interchange, so we've got a connection with the new development that's gonna occur to our existing development in downtown area. With that, we came up with new names for the anterior streets that connect onto that. We came up with new names for some of the township roads that eventually I expect will become part of the city as annexation occurs. What we didn't want to have happen was multiple names again. So if you look at 24, where it goes past Peterson Turkey Farm, that's gonna have a, a name of Willow Trail, I believe. Yep, and that'll go all the way out to the, where the new intersection for County Road 24 will go. So regardless of township whether, or regardless of annexation, whether it's a city or township or mixture, that road will have one consistent name all the way, making it very easy for, for people that have to use GPS, that type of thing, to find businesses as well as residences. I was all prepared to bring this to you, but our city attorney sent me an email and said that by statute, we have to do it through ordinance. And so I'm working with the city attorney's office. We're preparing the ordinance. You'll see that come before you at the next council meeting. But I did want to get it dropped to regular business, just so that you guys can be aware of what's going on, and then when you see the ordinance, it all makes sense. And if you have any questions on the renaming or anything, please let me know. This was a project we hoped to get wrapped up much earlier, but there's, as you can imagine, a lot of details. We don't want to miss any addresses. We've tried to design the numbering, taking into account vacant lots or outlots that could be developed on the road to ensure that the numbering sequence remains the same. Once the city council acts, I've already spoken with the postmaster, then we'll get the information to him, and then that'll get entered into their system. The only thing that we don't know will be the trigger. Whenever the county renames or opens, the new road, from what I understand, that will be the trigger for them when they will rename everything else. But I expect is that we will have a period of time where, for the post office and for maps, we'll have an overlapping component of those names.
Just on your map here, you gotta fix a couple of things.
Well, there's, there's a couple I noticed, but if you've, we can visit afterwards, and they may have missed something. I appreciate it.
Okay, so.
No action needed.
No action needed tonight? Okay. Thank you. Okay, that moves us on to item 7B, Resolutions 2061, petition for dissolution of Cannon Falls Hospital District pursuant to Minnesota Statute 447.38 subsection 1.
Yeah, Lanell, is that, when I was reading that over, is that some kind of separation thing from the 2006 contract? Is that what that is? And I, I thought there was a hospital board and all that stuff. So I was kind of wondering why the city is involved in this.
Well, my understanding is that state statute requires that an entity within the hospital district has to represent this, present this, so that the hospital district can be dissolved. And with the purchase from the Mayo Clinic and the building of the new hospital, that district is no longer needed. But Glenn Christian is here, and he can address these issues much better than I can. So Glenn, if you would like to maybe discuss this with the council?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, staff members as well, my name is Glenn Christian. I'm an operations administrator at the Mayo Clinic Health System in Cannon Falls. Yes, we did ask that the city council consider this petition at this particular time. As you know, the hospital exist, district existed for a number of years. At this particular time, we no longer have a purpose for the hospital district itself. The assets and the buildings were turned over to the Mayo Clinic Health System here in Cannon Falls. And so at this particular time, the purpose that was originally established, established for the hospital district no longer is needed. If we continue to operate, the hospital district will start to incur some expenses. Directors and officers, liability, insurance, other types of things that are necessary at this particular time because the district no longer serves that purpose. Mayo has met all the requirements that were required as a part of the affiliation agreement. We know that the new hospital is being constructed at this current time, and it's expected that, that new facility will be opening up in August of this year. We had to select a date for that, so we're excited about that and, and looking forward to that. But there is no purpose for the hospital district at this time.
So by approving this, then you guys then will dissolve your hospital board as we all used to know it as?
Correct. We need to take this petition back to the hospital district board, and then they will act on that and start the process for dissolving the hospital district itself.
There's no board with the new hospital or anything?
Yes, there is a board. We do have a board that has nine members currently that serve on the hospital board. There's five members from the Mayo Health System itself and four community members that serve on that board as well.
So the old hospital up there, is, is there any ideas in your plans right now, or is you gonna tear it down, or are you gonna?
At this particular time, I would say that that is the intent, is to take it down at this particular time. Obviously, if we had somebody come by to say that they would like to occupy that building, we would enter into serious discussions with them to say, is there a useful purpose for it? But we recognize the responsibility that we have. We do own the building as Mayo Clinic Health System, so we do have a responsibility to either take that building down and convert it into something that's usable or, or use it for some other purpose at this time. But we have not been able to find anyone that's been interested in using that building for any purpose at that, at this time.
And Leroy, I can partially answer some of your question on that. The, the Mayo system and the EDA are, are working on something that's gonna be coming forward to the council here in the near future.
We have had discussions with the Economic Development Group, yes.
What about the housing now? Is that part of your tear-down, or are you gonna try to sell them back to residents, or?
They're very usable houses at this particular time, so if we could put those back into residential use, certainly we would consider that, yes. I mean, that would, that would be the intent. And that is a, you know, predominantly residential area, and so we want to maintain that, that feel for that, that area. So, yes, we would, we would work with whoever it is to dispose of those properties as well. We have no purpose to use them in the future, as the answer to your question, so.
Is that like next year, you're gonna think about dealing with this stuff, or how far off is that?
Correct. Most likely. I mean, we, if we have to take down the building, which again is what we are thinking that we need to do, it would. we need to do, it would probably be 2015 before we would consider doing that. So, but we realize too that we have a responsibility for that property and we will not have a use for it and so we, we think that 2015 will be reasonable.
Thank you.
Thank you for the questions.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, Chair will take a motion to approve Resolution 2061, petition for dissolution of Cannon Falls Hospital District.
So moved.
And I will second that.
Of a motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Thank you, Mayor and council members and city staff.
Thanks, Glenn.
Thanks, John.
This time we'll move on to reports. Mr. Anderson? Is there another one over there? Chief?
First, you know, it's, seems a little strange, we're already thinking about these things, but we're already giving thought to the melt and potential for flooding. So I've been having a conversation by email with our fire chief and in person with our public works director and so we're starting to already formulate plans for, for the spring. Hopefully, Mother Nature will be kind and the snow will melt slowly and we won't see any significant rise in the war, water for the river, but we are starting our preparation already, so I wanted the council to be aware of that. The second thing is I received a phone call from Officer Sather and when I was in the office earlier today for a meeting, I found a letter from him. Officer Sather's been offered a job with the City of Red Wing Police Department and has tendered his, his resignation effective March 20th. I don't know if the council would want to act to accept that this evening or not. I certainly can prepare a memo for the next council meeting, but I did want to let you know and I'll be looking to try to get our police commission together, perhaps after the next council meeting or just have to see what schedules are, are like, otherwise sometime within the next few weeks. That's all I have.
Thanks, Chief. Yeah, just let us know on that and it'd probably be better to do it the next one when you've got the, the memo written up.
Yep, I'll, I'll prepare a memo and everything for you for the next one.
Start looking at his, for his replacement.
I think we're, we're very fortunate. You know, the newest officer, Jake Edwenson, is probably about three to four weeks away from being done with his training. We'd be able to move him right into that spot, but then we'd have to backfill again that position. But from the reports I'm getting, I think Jake will be, should the council choose to go that direction, I think that'll be a very good addition for our community. He seems to want to become connected and engaged. I would expect that he would, you know, be very active in some of the different things that the department does and I think that that would be a, a good direction to go.
Hey Jeff, you know, I think our new hires, we have to have some kind of a penalty clause in there that if a Goodyear County Sheriff or Red Wing hires our people, there's a $5,000 fine. Because we seem to train a lot of people.
Well, you know, I, I'd just sort of gotten used to the sheriff stealing them away from me and I sent an email to the, the Red Wing Chief and put him in that same category now and he chuckled back and said, too many retirements. So for them, you know, what they're, they're faced with is, is officers who are retiring. For us, we don't have that, that problem yet, but you know, I think this will be a good move for, for Officer Sather and I think it'll create an opportunity for our agency in, in bringing Jacob, Jacob into a, a full-time position. So I can't say it's necessarily a win-win, but I, I think it's, it's really going to be, you know, an opportunity that, that will allow us to take advantage of not losing this part-time officer.
The only thing I just wanted to mention is to remind you, as you probably already aware, but Ron Johnson, our new city administrator, is set to start on Monday, so we're very eager to have him take over. He's actually going to be stepping in for a few minutes tomorrow morning to get some paperwork started and stuff so he can get right at it on Monday morning, so looking forward to having him here.
Make sure he's got his running shoes with him.
Yep.
Merle?
Nothing.
Nothing. Uh, yeah, a few things. One, I want to publicly thank Lanell for filling in after Aaron left and she's done an excellent job over the last number of weeks. And I would also like to recognize Sarah Peir. She's been doing some extra work while one of our staff members is out, so I want to thank her for that. Also, Tuesday, we did have a public works meeting and as you saw on tonight's consent agenda, we approved where we're having individuals who have had freezing water problems to just pay their normal water bills for now until we solve our, solve the whole situation, which will take, you know, probably a couple of months here. And I think, I think that's it.
Leroy?
Just to make a comment on the water freeze-ups, I'm glad the council is taking a step to, to credit back these extra charges, but I also would like to say that I hope to meet with Ron next week to figure out some direction because to give you an example, I, I talked to Tom at the end of last week and he told me about the freeze-up in the cul-de-sac up there and since then I've had four other ones myself. And I got to thinking about the cul-de-sac because I've had three different calls on cul-de-sacs now. Of course, you don't get the flow through there like you do other places. So I decided last night to try to sit down and put some numbers together and see what this would cost us and stuff. In the meantime, I got thinking, wow, on all cul-de-sacs, if we got one freeze-up, we got to start running water to the other ones. So I stopped down and talked to Tom this morning and said, you know, you should get ahold of the other people on the cul-de-sacs and get them running water as a preventive thing. And he said, well, it's too late, the other two are froze up too now. And the other ones, I know that Tom wants to take a preventive things, but until we vote and give him permission to do that, he's afraid to stick his neck out there. So if, if the council could encourage him to do whatever preventive things he can do, we should encourage him to do that because I estimated that it's about 1,500 bucks every time a system freezes up if we're going to let them run and, and that's not including the thawing process. So if we have to leave them run for two months or something. So whatever we could do to prevent that, we're saving that money. So whatever we can come up with to, it's not just us, Austin, Minnesota has taken over the whole system completely. They do the thawing and everything. Turtle Lake, Wisconsin had so many freeze-ups that they ran it out in the paper and made it mandatory, everybody's got to run water. So I'm afraid if, if we don't give Tom some encouragement, we're just freezing up more things. So I wish there was some, maybe we could give him some kind of a preventive concept to go ahead and do things rather than just leave it happen. Thank you.
Nothing.
All I can say is I feel sorry for the people with the freeze. I mean, it's been a bad year and hopefully things will work out for you.
We'll have Tom and those guys get on it and whatever he can do to try to get that water going for these people, that's, that's unsatch, you know, you can't live in your home without running water because you can't flush your commodes, you can't do anything. So, I mean, I understand Mother Nature, but you know, we got to try to figure out something to get the water running back, you know, again for these people because this is totally unsatisfactory as far as that portion of it goes. So if you can talk to Tom and whatever he's got to do, have him do it.
I will talk to Tom.
Thanks. Also, I'd like to say congratulations to Clay Rose for repeating as a state wrestling champ. Good job. Also, for all the other wrestlers from Cannon Falls that made it to the state in the singles matches, hang in there, it'll be your turn next year to, to bring home another state championship. So congratulations to all of you guys. And this time, if nobody else has anything, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.